Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just going to let you know we have 60 seconds before the start of the meeting. We have 60 seconds before we start the meeting. Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to go live in three, two, one. You are live.
Welcome to the CA PC meeting, November 20, 2025, 5:00 PM here in Rika Springs Auditorium. We're in the downstairs part, and this is our regular monthly meeting. And let's have roll call, please.
David Amenzino.
Here.
Heather Wilson, present.
Sheera Faust.
Here.
Robert Schmidt.
Here.
Colton Scribner.
Here.
And Steve Holyfield.
Here. And we still have one vacancy open. Welcome, roll call agenda updates. Anybody want to add or take away anything from our existing agenda? I see a discussion of our staff over there. Good? Okay. Agenda stands. Do I hear approval of the agenda? Anybody?
Motion to approve the agenda from the, oh, what is it? Last meeting.
Agenda for this. This is the agenda.
Oh, the agenda. No, there's nothing.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay. David made the motion, Robert seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries as presented. Now we'll do the, do we have the minutes?
It was emailed out, October 29.
October 29th minutes? I did see that. I just remembered. Do I have a motions except the minutes?
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Heather made the motion and Colton seconded it for October 29th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Motion carries. Public comments?
One.
We have one public comment. Who's that?
Damon Hinky here, 19 Thomas Drive, resident for 15 years. Happy to be here tonight. No, I actually just wanted to give a sincere thank you for the CA PC coming to the year-end banquet of the Chamber of Commerce. It was very successful. We gave out some awards, had a fantastic meal there at the Crescent Hotel. So we are back on track with the banquet. It's always kind of been the outro for the season, a way to bring all the business owners together and say, hey, good job. Let's do it again in 2026. Obviously, we've got the Christmas parade coming up, so we're all geared into that, trying to have the best Christmas parade that we possibly can. And then next spring, we'll have the Tourism Trade Show. That's really the introduction to the, to the next tourism year. That'll be scheduled for April. I'll get back with you more, more on that in the future. So just a thank you overall.
Are you all doing the ends, ends?
Thanks for bringing that plug up. Yes, Christmas at the ends, December 6th. Not a replacement for Preservations Tour of the Homes. That will happen again next year, but we thought this would be a little, a little try to fill a gap, to show off what we have in lodging in downtown. Actually, it'll be all over town. We just kept it downtown this year because it would be an easier event to manage. But I believe we've got nine ends on that. They will be decorated for Christmas, and we're really looking forward to that. We did just have our first planning meeting with the ends so that they all know what they're expected to do and the logistics of moving everybody around. So we are really going to move people from the Queen Anne Mansion all the way up to All Seasons Inn and Upper Spring Street. So kind of a thoroughfare right down the middle of town here.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I like to always do the tour of homes, and there's always been an end or two on the tours at times. So this is going to be a different ordeal, which will be fun. All right. Any other public comments from the public? Okay. That's it. One person. Financial reports?
I'll be taking that role this evening. Ty came in today very ill, and we sent him home. We didn't really need to have Ty here. Hold on just a second.
Public comments. I think, I think we're waiting to see if he has public comments.
Beau may be here for public comments.
Beau, you want to do public comments?
Yes.
Okay. You're about, you're about a minute late.
Well, I've only six pages, but I'll, I'll try to make it quick.
You only have three minutes.
Well, I'll tell you when to start. No. Thank you. I'm Beau Stator. I live at number two Fairmount Circle. I'm going to actually read one page of this rather quickly for you. For those of you commissioners who have difficulty accepting the full responsibility of our city auditorium, offering the following excerpt about the Little Rock A&amp;P Commission and how they view their responsibilities. They spent $70 million between 2010 and 2016 renovating their Robinson Auditorium, built in 1939. This cost was paid for entirely with CA PC tax. The commission is, I need my reading glasses. Oh, all right. I'll speak. The commission is in charge of overseeing the Little Rock Convention and Visitors Bureau, as well as city-owned facilities like the State House Convention Center, the Robinson Center, and the River Market. The Little Rock A&amp;P does not rely on any funding from the city's general fund for any operations or maintenance of these city facilities. The debate about the city financial support of the odd versus the city A&amp;P is not new, nor does it warrant further discussion. Any expense to the city that can be legally paid by the A&amp;P tax revenues should be paid by them. Every dollar from the city's general fund and parks commission has greater purpose and need than the A&amp;P advertising budget. Rather than proposing to bill the city for odd expenses paid by the A&amp;P, try repaying the city for all the odd expenses in the past. Our city looks so shabby right now, and our guests mention it at all the time. Talk about curb appeal. The curbs have not been painted in three years. They have chunks broken out of them everywhere. The sidewalks are collapsing on Spring Boulevard and are incomplete and unwalkable all over our city. The beautiful renovation to our Basin Spring reservation by the Parks Commission strikes a disheartening contrast to the rest of the city. Our streets ride like logging roads. Our two-city councilmen on the A&amp;P Commission should protect our city's general fund budget by removing all expenditures, expenditures there that can be legally paid by the A&amp;P tax revenues. The A&amp;P should pay all odd expenses, support parks, fund the A&amp;P staff and events, then budget advertising. Out of $2 million a year in revenue, the A&amp;P needs to get their priorities straight. Every study that has ever been done for our city shows that most advertising is a waste. How many minutes I got left? All right, I'm going to submit the, the rest of this in form because it's the history of the A&amp;P, and so that you can look at that later.
Hey, Beau, can, this is really loud.
It is loud.
You want me to start over?
No. Please do not start.
I don't need a microphone.
What I would like to do, can you email each of us a copy of?
Yes, I was working on that at four o'clock, then 4:30, then a quarter till, and then here I am.
Okay.
I will send you all a copy.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is that it? All right. Back to Mike.
Okay, as I mentioned, Ty is ill today, so we've sent him home, and I'll go ahead and give you the report this evening that he did prepare for us. Page one, and I'll go ahead and kind of operate this at the same time, too, hopefully. Our ballot sheet, currently we have $1,616,270.56 in assets, and that would be page one of this particular account. And you can see the breakdown from CS, our money market first, Cornerstone Reserve, and so forth. On page two, which is this page here, liabilities and equity balance out at the same amount of money, $1,616,270.56. On the next page are the actuals, if you will. Our tax remittance for the month of October thus counted, and I will say thus counted because we are still collecting money from the month of October. $215,189 has been the current remittance. We budgeted 212, so we're actually $3189 in the good, which is a really good thing right now. On the second page, similar, those are the breakdowns of expenses thus far for, through, for and through the month of October. And then when we finally get to the page five of the report, the rest of that, and again, I apologize for this. This is a Ty job, not a Mike job. And then finally, when we get to the last, you can see where our balances are at this point with our net income. This turned out to be a good month. Again, we are still collecting money for the month of, of October. The indications are quite strong that November was a particularly good month for a lot of people that we have heard, and we're optimistic that perhaps we'll get closer to closing in on the deficit that we had going into 2025. On the very last page of this, again, you can take a look at this chart, which Ty has put together for us, which kind of shows a little bit of the transactional work. Obviously, we are again waiting for the October numbers to come in, but if we look at 23, 24, and 25, we've gained in all those particular areas. If you take a look at cumulative totals in September of '23, that $1,473, our totals so far for September, 1.496. And then we actually jumped ahead a little bit. Didn't quite catch up with September of '24, but yet we're making inroads and gaining on those numbers as we get into the final quarter of 2025. So that's where we stand today with our finances. Any questions that I can answer?
Any questions?
I have questions about the, of course I do, about the past due collections.
Oh, sure.
So I'm not really concerned about the one month because I understand how that flows, how it ebbs and flows. But looking at the multiple months, and then may require further action, these people continuously show up on this form every month, month after month. I mean, what is, other than number three on multiple months past due, they have closed permanently. I don't understand why we're not getting collections on these people. They're taking taxpayer money and not remitting it.
Well, we've done face-to-face with number one, number two, number three, and finally the last ones. And the push that we've made at this point is that based upon not receiving any more money this month, then we're going to go ahead and turn it in for collections basically through the county clerk.
So I don't know that we've ever developed or devised, or if the state law has it, this is the process that you follow. Is that the case?
Yes.
Because, I mean, to me, some of these on this may require, there should be liens on their property already. It seems like they've been over there for over a year.
We have that privilege, yes. And that's the point that we can take to the county clerk, and we can go ahead and file liens on those properties, indeed.
And does that need to be a vote from us?
No, it's just procedure.
Okay.
We haven't had to do it yet, and part of the reason that we haven't done it is in these cases here, with the exception of the final four down there, now they're number two on the last part, we have done the, basically, we have served them papers, you know, legally. And, you know, they've come back, and of course, we hear 157 different reasons why they're not remitting their tax. But at this point, we've made the decision that we're not going to go any further with it. We're going to go and file with the county and go ahead and do the liens on their properties. That's the only thing we can do at this point. I've had personal visits with one, two, three, and four.
Are you talking about on may require further action?
Yeah.
One, two, three, and four on the second group?
Third group.
Third group.
Our group, yeah. You know, at, at that point, the action can be taken in a couple of different ways. Number one, we can file with the county clerk, file a lien on the property, or we can take one further step, and that's to force the closure of the business. And that's the step that can be taken, and you really just have to go ahead and have a judge go ahead and order that. So there is a step that can be taken there.
I mean, I don't, I don't think I want to force closure on any business, but I would, I would put a foot down and say, you have X amount of months to pay this amount of dollars to keep your doors open. Otherwise, I mean, it's essentially comes out to tax fraud.
That's right. Well, we've done, you know, really, Ty's done a pretty good job of keeping up with these people. You know, we do an email trail for about two months. Then we do registered letter. And then after the registered letter, if we don't get results from that, then we turn it over to Bill Watkins. They do a process server that generally gets the attention pretty quickly. And most of the time, they'll even come in and go ahead and either write us a check or do whatever they have to do. In one case, however, they bounced the check twice on us. Then we went after them again, and they came back, and this time with money orders, go ahead and pay the bill. We recognize that we've got to go ahead and do something more severe legally with these people. We have not taken the big step. The step is basically, again, to go file subpoena or, in this case, a lien against their properties.
I mean, I personally, I don't know what, how everybody else thinks, but I think it's time that we, instead of may require further action, take further action.
Does that, so, I mean, there's multiple months past due, and there's may require further action. Does that mean that it's more than multiple months, or that you've made contact with them, and they still haven't paid?
We've made contact.
Okay, so those are the ones that you've made contact with after multiple months that haven't paid?
Anybody that hasn't paid in 30 days, or 31 days, sends, is, send an email.
Okay.
Asking for a remittance. If we don't have one within the next 30 days, then we go ahead and do it by registered letter. We may do two registered letters.
Sure.
Oftentimes, they sit unanswered, unopened in the post office.
Right.
That's happened multiple times, too. In the case of at least one, two, three, they got a visit from Mike.
Yeah.
Me. And, which is not an intimidating thing. It's just a thing that, you know, people come in, and they want to know what I'm there for, and I tell them I'm here to talk to you about your taxes. But then after that, we go ahead and exercise our legal responsibility through Bill Watkins, who does a process server. He sends a letter out that's scarier.
And is that how they fall into that fourth category? Okay.
Right, yeah. So these last four have all been given notices. So now the next step, basically, is to walk over and file.
Yeah, and Colton, just for, for your information, number two on that very last group has been at least three years on this list.
Three years?
Yeah.
On and off, on and off.
On and off.
Well, one, I just looked back at the last meeting. They were under the second, or the multiple months past dues with a payment plan. Now, all of a sudden, they dropped down to the last group. And, and the other ones were two months past due, and now they're, they're on the last group. Do they all have filed the reports, or are they also behind with the filing of the reports?
Generally speaking, they're behind on everything, Robert.
Okay.
You won't see a report with no money.
Well, I mean, like the, the number two on the new list, you know, like, because last time, it was under working out payment. So I would assume that we had reporting from them.
It's been on and off.
Okay.
And we, the thing of it is, he's been processed served before, and, you know, he knows better. So if we have to process serve him again, he won't like it. But on the same token, that's really the only thing we can do.
Well, we have no, we have a legal obligation to collect the money.
This is one that doesn't pick up his mail in the post office.
I know it seems black and white, but like, they don't pick up the mail, hit move forward, or they tell you they're getting ready to pay it, and they don't. Also, on number three on the bottom list, closed for good. It's gone.
Okay.
And number three, number, yeah, three, and three on the second list, closed.
Right.
I heard they're moving, but they're, they've gone.
I think they, it's a temporary closure.
In this particular case, on that list in the second series here, they did come in, make a substantial payment.
Which one?
Number three.
On the second list?
Closed, right. They made a substantial payment, and then they are on a payment plan to go ahead and extinguish that debt over the next several months as they can.
Mike, one more question about number three on the first list, two months past due. My understanding is that they are strictly Airbnb VRBO. So shouldn't those checks be coming from VRBO and Airbnb?
That needs to be confirmed.
Because you cannot.
Needs to be confirmed. And we've had a conversation with them in our office and also their bookkeeper to go ahead and take care of them. And I can't recall what the, the answer was with them.
Because I know you can't book direct. It's a VRBO Airbnb situation.
Let me make a note on that one.
Unless they take Watkins.
We know him.
You know, if they take Watkins, that might not go through the.
They don't.
I don't think they do.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Anything else on financials?
Just one quick thing. Two of these businesses are for sale as well. The first one under two months past due, and the second one under multiple months past due.
Yeah.
Unless it's sold. But I suspect that that could be part of the reason.
If they are up for sale, this is one of the reasons that we've got to go ahead and file a lien immediately.
Yep. Right.
And the other part of that is, is that generally speaking, no one wants to buy a property that's in tax arrears. And we've had that situation before in working with planning.
Okay, moving on.
Need a motion to accept. A motion to accept or reject.
I know. We're done with the talking. I appreciate that. So financial report, I hear a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the financial report.
Sheera?
Second.
Sheer made the motion, David seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Motion carries unanimously. Old Business Vacant Commission Seat Update.
Tourism.
Mike or Danielle?
Tourism. Are we doing tourism report?
Oh, I'm sorry. I passed right over. Tourism report. As Mike was talking, I guess.
Wherever you want to go.
Nope, tourism report.
If you don't mind, I'm going to jump. I should have changed the agenda on this. I'll leave it on. We had a really interesting PR report. We had a really interesting PR report come in from our PR agency recently, and it's just really good stuff, and I want to go ahead and share that with you this evening because it gives us really a reason to kind of smile a lot about the things that we do. October media monitoring with Madden, we hit these particular sites here. Number one, Lonely Planet, eight of the North America's greatest road trips to take in the fall. You know, they got 13 million views out of this. New York Times, we scored again in, again, haunted, hallowed, or odd seven hotels with bizarre histories. AAA Magazine, the extra mile, four small US towns with large LGBTQ communities. Afar, now is the moment to visit the country's most underrated fall foliage route. And then Travel Pulse, under the radar small towns for fall trips. And Afar did a really cool picture, obviously, as you can see in the photograph that we've got up there. And our media monitoring in general, NPR, wow, Colton Scribner. Colton was a star on NPR.
Superstar.
And, yeah, this was amazing, with 27 million listens to this particular program.
Yep.
So, we all listened to it, and we all went, gosh, he's really good. And that worked out really well. So thank you so much. Fantastic PR for Eureka Springs.
If anybody in the audience want to see the overhead, it's behind you, so, for numbers.
Very cool, very cool. 27 million, actually almost 28 million, listening to NPR. Business Insider picked up a story on us, coolest building in every US state with photos, 330 million there. Newsday, most haunted hotels in the United States to visit, over a million. The Observer, America's most 13 haunted, 13 spots where dead supposedly refused to check out. Interesting, 400,000 people there. And Wedding Chicks, 20 unexpected wedding venues that will totally wow your guests, 30,000 of those. MASH, best fudge shop in every state. World Atlas, nine of the most adorable small towns in Arkansas. And Family Destinations Guide, 10 charming towns in Arkansas that are perfect for unforgettable day trips. Really good, just fantastic media monitoring from Madden. Really cool press visit came about earlier this month. Diane Ravel from, who's a freelancer for Southern Living, HDTV, All Recipes, and Better Homes and Gardens, came with her dog, as you can see. And she said, my trip was absolutely amazing. I've always heard great things about Eureka, and I wanted to visit, but the destination really preceded, I don't know how I should come up with that word, preceded my expectations. The people are so kind, I got to meet a lot of owners and chat with some of the residents who have lived there for years and chose to retire there. I'm excited to share my fantastic experience. So her work, not only online, but also coming out in some of these particular magazines that she freelances for. So that was a cool visit we had from Diane. I'm going to jump around just a little bit here in terms of some of my other things that I wanted to talk about. Today was the first time we've had a look at Madden Media's proposed budget for 2026. We like what they've done, and we'll be able to share that with a little bit of tweaking on a couple of areas that we're working with. The one thing that will not change is the amount of PR that we're asking for, it's going to remain the same, which is at a very high level. So we're real pleased about that. And they're comfortable in that relationship, even though we've had to go ahead and cut them back substantially, as you all know. Some things coming up, and then some things I just want to talk about. The Wizards of Winter is coming this Friday at the auditorium, November 28, next Friday as a matter of fact. It's a seven o'clock show. This is former members of Manheim Steamroller, Blue Oyster Cult, Def Leppard. This is a power, power Christmas show. They've got 18 people in the cast, lots of lasers, lots of fog, lots of Christmas music, and it's a great family show. We're excited to bring that back. Winter decor is in place. A lot of thanks go out to our Public Works, to Parks Department, including the CAPC staff, which has worked diligently trying to get the lights up and the, the garland on, and the town is looking fabulous. And also thanks to Michael Akins for going out and picking up some more Christmas decor. Kind of a sad story, some of you know, some you don't. They got into the, basically, the chambers where all the decorations have been stored in the past, a large container, which is not necessarily on city property, but vermin had gotten in and chewed up a lot of stuff. I mean, literally hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars of lights and decor and so forth. So there was a big scramble to go ahead and try to go ahead and mend those. Some could be fixed, some could not. So the city really went into high gear to go ahead and bring in some more decorations to make the town look good.
Not at the chamber, but at public storage.
At public storage, my apologies. Okay.
The chamber's over there shaking her head.
No, 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 it's not us, okay. We have been meeting on a regular basis, preparing for New Year's Eve 2025. Kind of an exciting time. I thought I'd go ahead and share something that you'll be able to see shortly here. Oh, let's see this first. Green Room Bathroom. We have, we're working with a grant organization right now to secure a grant to go ahead and fix the green room. This is going to be, we don't know how much it's going to cost yet, but their grant writers, they took a look at the pictures, and they said, wow, one picture is worth a thousand words. So, they know, now, everybody else knows, too, so we're working on that to get that done. You can make all the jokes in the world you want to about this, but the door's only five foot eight. So, thank you. Coming up, we do have New Year's Eve, and this is what's going to be on TV. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm running out of space here. We got a really great letter, or we didn't, but actually, the letter went to Heather Baker at AY Magazine. And Heather was here not too long ago, and she got a letter from Becky Gillette, and I'm going to read the letter because it's such a great letter. It says, Dear Heather, I have to tell you how much positive impact you've had with your cover story on Eureka Springs. This is a town that depends on tourism to survive, and having this kind of positive in-depth publicity about Eureka Springs is a gift. One thing I liked is how you spread the attention around with the 52 things to do in Eureka Springs. Personally, I have an Airbnb rental, and now when people ask me for suggestions on things to do, I just tell them to look at the AY Magazine on the table. I have a list of suggested activities in my guestbook, but I think your article, articles with the photos is a lot more interesting. I'm planning to make a copy of it and laminate it to put in the guestbook. I can tell you that many of my visitors come from Arkansas, some even from Bentonville. So you definitely hit a big portion of our audience. Thank you, Becky Gillette. So Becky, thank you for sharing that with AY Magazine. Last thing I have here is just a peek at what you're going to see coming up shortly on your televisions around the area. With sound.
Sound.
Sound? With sound? Well, maybe without sound.
Hold on. You got it?
Okay, it's a great visual. Nonetheless...
Turn volume up.
Okay. And Amy kids, but anyway, that's what the TV spot video looks like. So it's a, it's a, it's a power spot, and again, bash with a splash. New Year's Eve, and this will be starting basically around the first second of December, pushing it all throughout the month, along with pushing that message along with Arkansas tourism as well. That's my report for the session.
All right. Thank you, sir. Oh, business, vacant commission seat update.
We need more applicants.
Sorry? Did we, do we have no update?
We need, no. We just, we don't have any applicants, and we need applicants.
Okay.
So if you need to know where the application is, it is on visiturekasprings.com, the Partners tab, scroll down to the middle of the page to About CAPC in the middle, and there will be an application that will tell you more about the positions.
Okay, great. Thank you, ma'am. So no current applications to discuss. Moving on, City Auditorium Agreement. I'll take the start of this. Mike and I met with the mayor and the financial director, Michael Akins, on Tuesday, and we discussed the current pass, I mean, the current agreement, the past agreement, and I have verbally confirmed from former CAPC commissioners that there was a verbal agreement agreed upon by them and the city back in 20, January 2021. It was intentionally meant to be put in writing, but never was. But these former commissioners say, yes, we did have an agreement. That did include the director and the financial director, so. So where do we go from here? We looked at the breakdown of the costs. Ty did a nice breakdown of what we spent on the auditorium, but I think we really need to look at it from more of a leaser and a leasee, because there's a lot of stuff on that, that list, there's stuff that somebody who's renting, like, if you were renting a house, there's things that you would pay for as a renter. So there's things on there that doesn't really match what we think about as what a landlord should be paying for. So with the commission's permission, I like to work with Mike and Michael and, and try to work out a new written agreement, and then bring it to the commission, unless somebody wants to volunteer to do it. What? What? Okay.
I just wanted to say that I'm not, my issue was not with the CAPC sharing expenses. My issue was with the fact that nobody knew, there was a magic agreement, nobody actually knew it, knew where it was, and it turned out it was verbal and not in writing. And we were operating on something that didn't exist. That's the issue that I have with taxpayer money. I, I think it's great that we work out an agreement, and I would like to just point out one thing. When there are multiple renters, multiple people share the cost. There are multiple people who use this building, and if we are the ones, if they're saying, okay, we're giving you, we're handing over the reins, and you're managing this building, then we need to know what parameters we have to say, okay, this is what we do, this is what we don't. To Mr. Satori's point, it's great for us to think about managing this. We also don't have the staff that the Little Rock A&amp;P has, nor do we have near their budget. So we need to consider that, too. We don't have $70 million. So I, I just want to keep that in mind as well.
Right.
Thank you. And thank you both for, for meeting with the mayor and Mr. Akins.
And I'm not making excuses, but part of this was done during COVID, and all the COVID stuff is going on and wrapping up and stuff, so. Robert?
Well, I took the time a little bit to, like others did the same thing, probably going through the YouTube recordings, and I stumbled over one thing that was like from 8/25 meeting in 2021. And apparently, there were previous meetings that the repair from the elevator was $220,000. And apparently, the CAPC confirmed that they would pay 75% of that expense, which is the $44,000 a year on a five-year plan.
That's the contract for the upgrade of the renovations of this whole downstairs area.
Yes.
And there's a five-year contract set up by the city with the CAPC, and the CAPC agreed to pay 75% of that.
It was, it was updates, it was office updates, auditorium merchandise market, and there was different things.
And that is a written agreement. That part is written.
For that part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When the city and the CAPC.
So we, we will continue paying the $44,000.
We have two more payments left.
Two, yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll, we, we have it in the budget, which is okay, so we're, we're good on that part.
Right.
And then, I saw some plans and everything, you know, like, it seemed like everything started in 2021.
If anybody finds anything else, or any other questions, concerns, please send them to Mike and myself, and we'll start this process. I'd like to get this done by our next meeting, so we can present it to you, because David and I probably will not be on the commission after, after December, for the new year. So it goes back to City Council to vote on.
Way to just throw that out there.
That's a fact of life.
That's up to you guys, right?
I'd like to get it finished before we go, so. It is a new year, and it's up to City Council, appoint two City Council members, so.
Can it be the same ones?
It could be.
I mean, okay. You, you have your, your challenge to have an agreement by then, right? Before your term ends.
Yep.
That sounds like a good plan.
Yep, at least we'll have a, a good start at it.
Yeah, we definitely need something in writing with a signature on it.
And the city wants, the city wants that, too.
Whatever, whatever it is eventually, I mean, at least we have something which is agreed on both sides.
Right.
And we can live with it, and we can have the budget for it accordingly.
Yeah. Cool. And the city's agreeing, too. There's no animosity here, we're all just, let's just sit down and work this out. New business, funding requests, moving on, first one. Is that diner and music?
Dinner and a musical.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
That's you, Jean.
Purple Flower. Yep.
The lighting's not great here, so dinner and musical.
Maybe I wrote down diner and musical, aren't I? Hello? Hi, Jean.
Testing one, two.
Okay.
There you go.
By the way, I'm Jean Flake, and I've been before you before. This is Shiloh Grace, Director of Purple Flower. And what we are requesting is support for a fundraiser for Purple Flower in February. It will be a dinner and a musical at the Grotto, and it, all funds, all net funds go to, will go to Purple Flower. But what I wanted to talk about before that is, when I was before you, a little over a year ago, and we were doing the same kind of thing for Good Shepherd Humane Society, the question came up, what does this do? I mean, this is an individual for, in a restaurant, and we're raising funds, but what does it do for the city? So I took that challenge, and while I, the last production we did was again, again at the Grotto, we did dinner and drama. We sold out every night. We raised close to $8,000 for Good Shepherd, but more than that, of our audience, 41% of the people from that audience came from over an hour away. And that's what we say, it may be smaller than some of the other events, but it does work, and the question is, what's Eureka about? It's about people like me, like Shiloh. It's about us creating something for the benefit of another group, but that also benefits Eureka. We bring these things in, and what do we support? I mean, what do we support? And does it bring in outside revenue? And yes, most certainly it did, and this one will also. So, that's, that is my presentation.
And I'm just here to back Jean up, but I did also bring our sort of annual report, just so you have some insight into our budget and our lack of fundraising and marketing budget to contribute to such efforts. And, you know, most of you already know what we do, and the fact that we've just lost our federal grant funding, which means that diversifying our funding base is critical right now. And so fundraisers like this are really important to our future as an organization. So, yeah, I'm also here to answer any questions about, about us as an organization or our budget.
All right.
I wanted to say, that makes my point, is we can support groups like this and bring in outside revenue into Eureka Springs, and we all win. All of us. Thank you.
And I just want to point out to those of you on the commission, you know, we did this last year for the shelter. It was fantastic. There were some questions about spending money for such a small event, but I've always been a big proponent of buy local, for local, and that's exactly what this does. Shiloh made a point that loss of funding, the loss of funding for this program, for this organization, is because of no fault of their own, it was essentially just snatched away. essentially just snatched away. So we, I think, went from, what was it? For the state, it was 70 million down to?
Yeah, so the federal grant funds for this kind of work were reduced by 60% across the entire state. The reality is, they, they chose to fund six domestic violence organizations in the whole state, which obviously is not enough to meet the need. And we were just at the bottom of that list. We did try. We, we applied for even more, but from a diversity of buckets federally than we have applied to before, and just didn't get any yeses.
Yeah. So I just, I just wanted to make sure that we all know that this is no fault of their own. And they need money. They provide a crucial valuable service to not only women, like everybody thinks it's, it's women, it's men, it's whoever needs their help. And the 41%, Gene, thank you, because I think I was one of the, maybe the one that asked that question last year.
Yep.
About how many people from out of state. So thank you.
And we're doing the same type of marketing plan. We're marketing outside of an hour from here.
Okay.
And like I say, this is just a great example of when a nonprofit like this is a need, let's create something that helps them, but also brings into our city people from outside it to come and see these events. Thank you.
And then one, one last thing I want to say, because I know people who have questions. I, for full transparency, was on the board of directors for Purple Flower. I have resigned from Purple Flower, so I can now vote on this process. So I just want to make that clear before we get started.
Any questions? Did I hear a motion?
I move to approve $2,437 for Purple Flower Dinner and a Musical at Grotto Woodfire Grill.
Second. And then made a motion, and David seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Carries.
Thank you. And come see the show.
Yeah.
Also quickly, come see a Christmas carol at the Crescent, December 12th and 20th. They'll be doing a Christmas carol play, and I'll be playing Scrooge. Thank you.
Sure. Everybody should get their plug in as best they can. Next up, it is Daven, David, I mean, Devin, excuse me.
Devin.
I can't talk tonight. Great Austin Springs Chamber of Commerce.
Good, good evening, and thank you for having me. So I did submit some paperwork to you guys ahead of time, you know, in respect of you guys' time. I, I won't read everything unless you'd like me to. But I did want to highlight some from last year. The majority of our marketing budget was allocated to Facebook campaigns. We did 668,441 total impressions with a reach of 442,197 unique users. They all learned about the event, learned about Eureka Springs, saw Eureka Springs city logo and the website. Some of the sample feedback we got was, and these are comments from Facebook, seeing this in Washington, Missouri, and instantly began making plans. Your marketing is working. Ha ha. We are here, made this trip possible. Can't wait to taste yummy chocolates. Can't wait to bring my daughter to this again. Last year was a blast. So the comments on Facebook were great. People are looking forward to next year. Approximately 45% of our attendees traveled from more than 50 miles away. So we do draw a great regional audience, and even further, we had a lot of people come stay, more so than in years past. Thank you to the, the support and marketing funding from the CAPC. We saw more people that were actually staying the night as opposed to coming for the day.
Questions?
I'd just like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the $5,000.
A second.
Second. David made the motion. Sheera seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
It's just the chocolate.
Thank you.
That's all you had to say, the chocolate.
Chocolate wins.
Yeah, you had me at chocolate. Okay, financial proposal. Is this about the budget?
No.
Nope.
It's actually a little more interesting. Ty and I have been talking a little bit about reserve monies that we have, and based upon what the Fed has done recently, and also a notice that we received from our bank, they're dropping our interest rates substantially. So in the 26 budget, you'll notice that the amount of interest earned, we've decreased by almost $5,000, depending on balance. So Ty's recommendation is to go ahead and do a couple of different things. Number one would be to take $250,000 out of reserve and shop the market for a 12-month, and then a $250,000 shop again for a six-month CD. Depends on the bank that we shop from. So we've got four area banks, RVS, CS, Equity, and also 1889, and basically send it out for a bid, based upon the fact that we've got that money, we'll make more money with it tied up than we will just leaving it in the money market account right now. We were projecting, I think Ty said, probably about three and a half percent, potentially four at some point. We got a notice that it's going to drop almost 2%. So that being said, protecting those assets, at least locked into a CD, you know, sort of is a, a good way to go ahead and manage that money.
Okay. Any questions?
I guess it's a good move to secure a little bit longer term on the interest. I mean, the tendency is visible that interest rates are probably going down as the economy is not going as, as some people hope for. And the push from the federal government, especially from the White House, to have lower interest rates regardless if it's correct or not, is probably the right move to secure it as, as long as it's possible.
And they ask? Do we need a motion then?
I have one question. Does it have to be banks within the county?
Not necessarily.
Like, I'm, I'm just, if there's a bank that's in Little Rock that offers a better deal, can we open it up to that? That's my question.
I, I think where we bank does not necessarily, is restricted to our county, or city for that matter.
Okay.
So.
But as long as it's one who doesn't fold.
Yeah.
No, I, it, that's a, a good point, David, and we can certainly go ahead and, and determine those banks which seem to be providing the best rate of return. And then we have a lot of banks in Arkansas. We are rich with banks. So.
Yeah. So we want to vote on it? Or want to postpone it? What do you, what do y'all want to?
We can probably go ahead and move on it, I would think. It's just how to word the motion. So you're asking for us, I'd like to make a motion to take $250,000 out of reserve funds to shop for and have a bid on a best CD.
We'd be looking for two, one, a six-month and a 12-month.
Six-month and 12-month. You can figure that in there, right?
I, I don't think that should, we don't need to have a motion for that. I don't think so. I mean.
I think because we're moving funds, we do have to.
I think of sides of it, I, I feel better.
Yeah, especially for a quarter of a million.
So it's clear the commission was involved in the decision. So that's a motion?
Yes.
I had a motion from David. Did I hear a second?
Second.
David made the motion. Sheera seconded it, moving funds 250 times two for a six-month and a one-year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
The only caveat would be if any of you sit on the board of directors of a particular bank, that we use.
Anybody? All righty.
I wish.
And that's it. Commissioner comments. We'll start with Mr. Abizino.
I really don't have any. I'm sorry that I missed the Chamber of Commerce thing. I saw all the pictures. It looked fantastic. Sucks for y'all, but I was in Mexico. So sorry. But no, good job. You do a lot of good work, and I was glad to see all that. Other than, I'm looking forward to the presentation on New Year's Eve. I know that some of the businesses on the outer loop, or the outer part of town, are actually shutting their doors early as we are. We'll be shutting at nine and pushing everybody downtown, because I think that's just going to be a bigger, bigger blast for everybody else. And yeah, that's all I have.
Heather?
I just want to wish those who observe a good holiday and a safe holiday next week. And thank you again to the CAPC staff for all that they do.
Thank you. Sheera?
I agree with Heather and, and also want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving who celebrates. So that's exciting. The Chamber Gala was good fun. I did go, and I am really unhappy that I wasn't in Mexico instead. That, that would have been my preference, and nobody asked if I wanted to go. They did ask if I wanted to go to the Chamber Gala and had a good time. So that was great. This was a good meeting, and thank you, Steve and Mike, for going ahead and pursuing the odd conversation and getting that rolling. We appreciate all you do. And Danielle, you and, and crew are wonderful always. We're so grateful to all of you. Thanks.
Thank you. Robert?
Well, not much. Happy Thanksgiving coming up, and this will probably be my last meeting physically here for this year. I will be traveling and will zoom in for the future meetings. I will always be here, but not physically.
Remember that bathroom when you were, where you were before?
Not this time.
That was awesome. That was awesome.
Colton?
Just echoing, thanks to Steve and Mike for figuring out the contract that we had verbally, I guess, with the city on the odd, and, and making sure that we have something written for the future.
Okay. And me. Workshop, December 10th at 5:00 PM. And these dates are moved around a little bit because, of course, the holidays, our regular meeting is moved for 12/18, also at 5:00 PM. Also, thanks for all the CAPC staff. I can't believe it's almost Christmas and Thanksgiving, and so this year's really flown by. And happy holidays, everybody. And I'll take it and move to adjourn.
Wait. Do we want to bring up, Steve, since you kind of dropped the bomb on next year, do we want to discuss that any further in your comments?
I can just review that. Every year, the city council on the January meeting asks who wants to be on the CAPC from the city council of the two positions, and it's voted on. David and I have been doing this for two years. David's a little bit longer.
Agreed.
He started, no, no, he started council a bit before we started CAPC a little after. So three years is a long time for this city council position to be appointed to a commission. So I don't know if we'll be back or not. We'll see, see how the vote goes, see how much they talk to us and ask us to or not ask us to.
Third time's a charm.
Fourth time. This is our, we have been there three years already.
Yeah.
That's pretty unusual.
Is there any interest to stay on, or?
I don't know. I think.
Oh, my gosh, can we adjourn before we continue this discussion?
All right. David's made a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sheera, second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you all.